Good morning, Maya Thon.
Good morning.
Morning.
So a packed house here.
Back bells.
Hi Roxanne.
Good morning.
Nice seeing you again this morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Commissioner Maravita.
Probably him.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Rick. I don't have...
How are you all doing?
Good. Did you leave me something on my seat last night?
Yeah.
Interesting reading.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll leave it at that and we'll see what's up.
Now we're live.
Hi, this is Jenny.
Hey, Smith, here.
Morning.
Good morning.
That should be everybody that we need.
Okay. You're live?
We're live.
Okay. Good morning. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Gracious God, we call upon you this morning to guide our meeting. May our thoughts align with what your will is for us to accomplish. Show us your will each day that we may bring glory to you. Lord, we recognize and are thankful for our freedoms we have in this great land. Let us not forget that came with enormous sacrifice. We are especially grateful for leaders like Washington and Lincoln as we prepare to reflect on President's Day next Monday. These two leaders faced incredible opposition in their time. They chose to fall on their knees and seek wisdom during those hours of need. May we learn from our forefathers and seek guidance and wisdom daily. Let us fall on our knees in prayer. We pray for our leaders to do what is right and be servants to the people, assist at our constituents in their needs. May they be supportive and be unified. We humbly ask you these things in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to our life, the United States of America, and to their public understanding, one nation under God, indivisible, with every equal justice.
Morning. We'll convene the Commissioner's public meeting this time and ask for the approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So carried. Public comment on agenda items only at this time. Hearing that, we'll move on.
Accounts payable cash requirements report with Heather Lehman.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Heather.
This week's accounts payable check run is an amount of $229,747.30. Did you guys have any questions regarding that?
No. I thought they missed a zero.
I know. It was a small one this week.
We like that. Any questions, Commissioner?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
I also thought, uh-oh, that's not 229. Is this million?
We'll take a few more weeks like that. Okay. Hearing no questions, objections, motion to accept the cash requirements summary.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So carried.
Roxanne Greco with Personnel Actions 3.0.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning Roxanne.
At the prison Chase A. Hockenbrock as a full-time replacement correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1, $17.46 an hour effective February 23, 2021. Also at the prison, Thomas B. Betts as a full-time replacement correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1, $17.46 an hour effective February 14, 2021.
Okay, so these are replacement positions at the county prison as we try to get our prison staff back up to full.
Yes.
Full staff. Any questions on these two positions? Hearing that, can I...
Another question. Oh, Mr. Chairman, I was thinking, you know, we should let the public know if there are people out there who qualify that there are positions available at the prison and the... What is the qualification, Ms. Greco?
High school education.
Okay. And obviously a good record, you can't write.
Correct.
So there are jobs. People are looking for them.
Yes.
Kenny just took my Commissioner's comment.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So carried.
Recess the Commissioner's public meeting for the salary board.
Commissioners, the district attorney is requesting to update the special detectives list of individuals participating in the DUI roving patrol.
Any questions or comments?
These are not regular employees of the county. They just come in when we're doing patrols, like checkpoints and things like that, correct?
Yes. These are individuals that are working for police departments in the area.
Yes.
Yes, and that are covered by the district attorney to perform those duties.
Have a motion to accept.
I'll move to accept.
I make a motion to accept.
I have a second.
Rick's second.
Rick's second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Heather? Okay. Aye. So carried. That's okay.
Thank you.
Reconvene the Commissioner's public meeting this time.
Maya has an informational item, 5.1.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. Just wanted to make you aware that we are going out to bid for the construction of a flood wall, the garage foundation, as well as the concrete sparboard that's needed for property out at 2107 McCumming Creek Road, which is the new location of MDG Solomon.
Okay, any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. So, the hypocrisy of it all. Here's a building that we purchased for $247,000 because we wanted to put the district magistrate into that building. And the building that he was in was inadequate, and we had been looking for a building for him for many years. So, we thought we did all of our due diligence and thought we found a good home for him. We removed a house, we removed a garage, and we're ready to start the process. And we're using our own employees at the county to do the entire job, only to be told that, well, you purchased a property in the flood zone or plain. Now, I've been in the restoration business for 33 years. I've seen that all over this county. I know where people get flooded. Okay? And that's not one of them. Now, did it get water in 1996? Yes. Yes, it did. Maybe seven inches, okay? But to my knowledge, no other time since I've been in business since 1987, none. Okay? Well, we were told that we had to build a flood wall. And we put in a cost. We put in a bid, although I'm in disagreement with this, and the citizens of this country and of this community should be outraged. The first price that we had was $187,000 to put a wall around this Butler Building. Right? It's a Butler Building. And this is what they want us to do, and this is what we have to proceed to do. If you're not outraged at this, and these are the little things that taxpayers are paying continually that make no sense. Okay? Because it's a commercial building, we can't put vents in there to allow the water to flow through. We're not allowed to do that. Now, you can do that in a residential, okay? But you can't do that in a commercial. We are self-insured. We're going to pay for the claim. Period. I do not understand, and I would ask our federal legislators to take a look at all this regulation. I mean, this makes no sense. It's not repetitive. And here, we're going to spend more money. To do what? To really do what? And a matter of fact, I could argue the fact that we eliminated two structures on that property which would reduce the base flood elevation. And I could also comment on the fact that by us putting the flood wall up there, we're displacing the water that causes the neighbors more flooding. This is ludicrous. I would love to postpone this whole job. Unfortunately, we can't. But I would love for the people to get together and say no. When is enough of enough? People are suffering right now. And this is something we should look at and see if we can change. I don't know if it's within our power, but I certainly will pursue it.
Commissioner, I agree with your comments totally. Why we're not grandfathered in is beyond me. This building was originally constructed, and they didn't have to do it when they constructed it. Now we have to do it since we purchased it, which makes zero sense. So I completely agree with your statements. These are the regulations that kills construction and business in Pennsylvania. This is what we're talking about when we say regulations. And why businesses do not come to Pennsylvania is regulations like this.
And who would have purchased the building? Knowing?
Yep.
By the way, just to let the public know, because the public may say, Commissioners, why did you buy a building that was in a flood area? We were very constrained in terms of the property we needed because we were in a judicial district subscribed by the state statute. In other words, we couldn't just take Magistrate Solomon and put him in some other place. He had to be in his judicial district. And we also needed to be on a bus route. We needed to have police access. There were a number of hoops we had to jump through. We needed a building with parking. We looked for a long, long time. So I don't want the public to think we kind of bought the building irresponsibly. We also needed something within a price range of what we thought was reasonable, so... But hopefully, we'll get these bids out and we'll find someone in the community who will who will put a reasonable bid together to do the wall.
And Commissioners, this was done at the end of the last term, right when I was coming in. And I believe you gentlemen were told this was not originally in the flood plain because it had only been in in one flood, which was the 96 flood, which was, as Commissioner Miss Sarr described, an extraordinary flood. So that's one in 100 years that we've seen maybe six to seven inches of water. So as I was just starting, I remember you guys being told that it was originally was not in it, but then you guys found out later that it was because of the one-time flood.
Yeah.
Still, we can ask ourselves the question. If we would have known that, would we have purchased the building? And the answer would be unequivocally no. No.
Yeah, I would have been against it.
Right. So what is it? What do we have to do to inform not only government? I mean, we, you know, how about people?
This building should have been grandfathered in. It was constructed. They didn't have to do it when they constructed it. It should have been grandfathered in. Okay, moving on.
With action items in 6.0, Maya Toon has 6.1 and 6.2. Maya?
Yes, seeking approval on a Radiation Emergency Response Fund grant application. It's in the amount of $5,876. This is a renewal grant. And this is specifically provides financial assistance to support counties for preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation for radiological emergencies.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing that, can I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So carried.
The next item I have is to acknowledge the list of contracts approved by the Director of Administration for the month of January, and there were 29.
Any comments on any of those questions?
Most of them are just legal representation contracts that I assume are on a as-needed basis for various conflicts or other issues.
Correct. And the majority of the reason why we have such a large amount is because these are all renewals. So typically, you'll see in either January or February a large increase in this type of contracts.
Right. And other are perfunctory kind of yearly inspections for fire.
Mm-hmm.
They have some interpreters down there, stenographers. Okay.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, motion, please.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Roxanne's back.
Okay.
Can we jump to her real quick before we go on?
Yes.
Commissioners, it was just discovered that last week when we met, the motion that the district attorney had submitted was not for the DUI center and the DUI detectives. This is the one that was approved last week. It was for special county detectives that are participating in the county's narcotics enforcement unit. So I would ask that you reconvene a salary board so that we can make that administrative change in the minutes.
All right. So at this time, we'll recess the Commissioner's meeting. We'll reconvene the salary board.
Commissioners, last week you approved a motion that should have stated that the district attorney was looking for...
I might have been troubled hearing.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Last week, you approved a motion for, it was stated as approving special detectives for the DUI roving patrol.
Yes.
That was an error, and it should be for special county detectives that are involved in the Lycoming County Narcotics Enforcement Unit. And this was approved last week, and I would ask that there be an administrative change.
Okay, so let the record reflect the administrative change? And can I have a motion to accept the new salary board action?
I make a motion to approve.
I need some more clarification.
Okay.
I can't move on.
Can we table it until we get more? I'll move to table until we get clarification.
No, no, no. This has nothing to do... This is just the names of the individuals that will be acting as NEU detectives.
NEU? No, I understand that.
Commissioner, this includes, and I can read from the actual papers that were submitted last week, but in putting it on the agenda, it was a misprint on my part.
Right.
We have an individual that's currently with the county. We have an individual that's currently with South Williamsport Police Department. And there are several that are involved in the Williamsport Bureau that are assisting the NEU in their operations. Also, Taya Dotton Valley Regional Police Department. I believe that's it.
This is something that's done annually.
So this has not...
I was going to say, this is our annual...
This is an update of the names of the individuals because...
Yes. Yes. We would never release the names due to confidentiality.
Right. I withdraw my motion.
The nature of the work.
Because I don't believe he has a full complement of NEU officers right now, correct?
I believe he does.
He does?
Yes. Yes.
Very good.
Okay. All right, so motion by Heather? Second?
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll recess the salary board action at this time, and we'll reconvene the Commissioner's meeting.
6.3 with Eve Adrian or Jenny. Are you going to do 6.3?
Um, Eve, welcome. Hi, this is Eve Adrian. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes. Good morning, Eve.
Hi, good morning Commissioners. We are requesting approval to accept the one-year Chesapeake Bay Countywide Action Plan Grant to reduce nutrient pollution in our local waterways. This grant was applied for using the DCEV's single application form, but it is actually a DEP grant, and it will pay for staff and conservation district time to develop a clean water action plan. And the project period will continue until January 2022. And Revolutionland County is our grant partner, and we're to be allocated $50,000 of this $100,000 grant. And this is a voluntary, non-regulatory plan that is driven by DEP, who will be assisting us throughout the life of this grant.
Non-regulatory grant. So can I assume there's no strings attached to this grant?
The way I understand it is that DEP is not imposing this over the counties. It is voluntary, and it is on the onus of the counties to really do their best to achieve the load reductions that have been in place that have a goal of reducing these particular load reductions by 2025. And it is, it has been explained to me several times by DEP that they are not imposing any regulations from this plan in particular. So that's what I mean by non-regulatory. Does that make sense?
Yes.
This is in conjunction with the whip, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is the money that the state's making available to the counties to help them implement the...
Yes, yes, sir.
Right, okay.
Okay, any other questions? I have a motion to accept the Chesapeake Bay Countywide Action Plan implementation grant.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So carried.
6.4 Darla Crozer, vote on the 2021-22 hazardous materials response fund.
Where are you, Darla?
Good morning Commissioners. This grant is very important to our department for, it pays the salary, completely the salary and the benefits for our part-time person, the CERA support specialist, who's very integral in helping with the hazardous planning of the county with the chemicals. If you, as you read through the report, you'll see the number of sites that we have. The CERA sites are 65 and the amount of activities that we had over the past year. And this grant's very important for that. It also helps to pay for the annual advertising for the local emergency planning committee, for our four quarterly meetings. If we can purchase office supplies or any additional things like the O2 sensors or calibration gas for our four gas meters, depending on the award of the grant. We won't know the amount of the grant award until after Pima has reviewed this and they've done their calculation, and we'll be notified in August or September what the award amount will be. But it is for July 21 of, or I'm sorry, July 1 of 2021 through June 30 of 2022. So we're asking you to approve the application.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing that, can I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Darla.
Did I hear you retiring?
I am, yes. October 15th.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I think you retired at 45.
What can I say?
Okay.
You'll be back before you retire, right?
To one of these meetings? That's why I'm here today is because...
No, it's not tomorrow, right?
No, it's not till October.
October, right.
Yes.
6.5 Director McDermott, amend award to the Club Car LLC.
Commissioner, seeking your approval to an amended agreement with Club Car for the purchase of 144 golf carts.
Okay, so I'll make a statement here. Initially, the Commissioners approved an agreement with Club Car for the purchase of 144 golf carts for a total price of $504,028. And that included the trade-in of 117 of the old golf cart fleet. So I want to clarify something, because I've been hearing people say, how can the Commissioners give $500,000 for new golf carts in the middle of COVID? And once again, the golf course is sucking taxpayers' money. That is not the case here. Since that time, Indigo Golf, which is formerly Billy Casper, that's their new name, Indigo Golf, was able to negotiate further a purchase price on the old fleet of an additional $20,400 in trade in the values for the equipment purchases outside of Club Car. In addition to the increase in the trade value, Indigo further negotiated a new cart price for Club Car for further savings of $42,750. So the county will now purchase the new golf carts from Club Car for $658,800 and will receive a total of $217,275 for the purchase of the old carts, for a total cost of the new carts at $441,525. So from the time that we negotiated this initially, it was $504,000, it is now down to $441,525,000. That equates to a new total savings of $62,475 from the original agreement earlier in January of 2021. Now, here's the point that we want to stress to the public. This is a loan. This isn't a give-me. This is a loan to Indigo Golf. The loan will be over eight years. The eight years will be at 2% interest. So they're paying back the loan in addition to 2% interest to the county. And that'll be for the next eight years. Why we're doing this is because they are making a profit over there right now. They are doing well. They have been doing well for the last three years. And in the midst of COVID this year, with the restaurant closed the majority of the time, they have about $200,000 in the bank. There are other improvements over there that they're going to take that money and utilize it to make those improvements. White Deer, Billy Casper, Indigo Golf, whatever you want to call it, is an asset to the county. White Deer, Billy Casper, Indigo Golf, whatever you want to call it, is an asset to the county. Just in charities alone, they're able to bring in $300,000 to the charities by having tournaments over there throughout the county for our nonprofits. The golf carts are essential to a golf course, that's how people get around on a golf course. They were breaking down. Golfers' clubs are falling off the back, the straps are breaking, their clubs are falling off the back, and their clubs are breaking. So we were placing clubs, so think about it, you go to a golf outing, your clubs fall off and they break. You're not coming back to that golf course. If you're out in the middle of a golf course and, and the cart breaks down, you're not coming back. That's a, that's a, an experience that you don't want to experience as a golfer. So it's important that we supply these, these carts were approximately 20 years old. They had to be replaced. Before they were leased, this way we buy them, we, we do a, an agreement with Billy Casper for eight years, at 2% interest, they pay it back. They'll give us one check each year, it'll be in October, and the payment will be, I believe, $35,000 in change in that ballpark. Uh, that's what their payment will be when they make their payment in October. I would not be in favor of this if we were just giving them taxpayers' money, absolutely not. Uh, when I ran, I stressed that the money train that went to White Deer had to stop. It had to stop, and, and I believe that Indigo Golf has been a good partner. Uh, they've been very, very diligent in saving money as they went back and negotiated this. We had a cost analysis done on this to see which was the best route to go. This wasn't just some random decision we made. The cost analysis said to do it this way, and to do it a loan to them, and then also to do it at 2% interest, so the county was making a little bit of money back. So that's, what we are doing is not just giving them $500,000. Any other comments on that? Okay.
Commissioner, just an update on the loan payment terms. So, uh, Indigo/White Deer will reimburse the county approximately $53,000 a year, and there is some increases, that's with the 2% interest. And there will be six monthly payments during the, uh, season. That's the budgeted items, but you will receive a check for $50,000 plus.
$50,000, and that'll be one time a year over the course of the six?
One time a year.
Right, that's what we thought?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Okay, and then also, we continue to pursue what we can do with the other land over there. We're in active negotiations on, on how we can go about that. We'll continue to update the public as we gain more and more information on what else we can do at, at that facility and the land surrounding it. Can I have a motion to accept the agreement?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Commissioner, comment?
I, I'll make one more comment about the purchase of the Solomons Building. Is that, when you see, when you go purchase buildings, if you had a fire in your home, or, or a flood, or anything like that, you're supposed to disclose that information at closing. And maybe our legislators could take a look into that and see what we can do as far as putting on disclosures of sales agreements for the purchases of homes or commercial properties. Not only to tell you if it was in a flood plain, but, but also what an average cost would be, or, or what rules that you'd have to follow. I, I think that we're doing our citizens as well of our, as well as our government a disservice by not seeing that in, in an agreement. It's not something that was easily caught. Similar to the, uh, the London, you're gonna hear me ask many times, when the government's gonna give us money, are there strings attached? Because White Deer is a good example of that. White Deer's an example of where we received $20,000 from DEB, and, and they held hostage 450 acres for a project that only consumed about five acres of that land. And it just doesn't make sense. So, um, I'd like to see if, if our legislators could do something and, and legislate that it becomes a disclosure on a sales agreement.
That's a good point, because the, over White Deer, what happened was, 1978, they borrowed $20,000, $20,000 of federal monies, and they tied to structures. Doesn't say what the structures are, doesn't specify it. When researching the deed, they didn't even have it in a deed. Uh, we found out from, from a retired employee from the state. He believed there was a contract done back in the late 70s. And from researching it, we were able to find it in the archives. But it's, it's very discerning when you, when you don't even have it written in a deed. And thank God, we didn't go ahead and sell anything over there, and then find out later what happened to the city of Redding when they did the same thing and put a $10 million building up. And then did not have any land to swap out, and had to go out and purchase additional property to swap out the land, uh, due to the, the regulation that was tied from borrowing federal monies. Uh, are you good?
I apologize, I have it on silent, but it's ringing anyway.
Do you have anything else?
No.
I just want to add one other thing, is, is the state continues to work on their budget. It's very disheartening what's going on in Harrisburg. I spoke to Representative Hamm, um, he was down there, and he was one of the few representatives that, that stressed that Harrisburg is, is spending too much and not cutting. And to show you what they're doing now is they're, they're robbing funds to try to balance their budget. And they've done this in the past, but it's getting, getting to the point of disgusting. They've taken $50 million out of the recycling fund to try to balance their budget, they're raising fees. We just note, we were just notified this week on a fee that was gonna be over at the landfill with Fair Quality. The, the normal fee is $750 per year, they've raised it to $8,000 per year. And this is, this is the insanity that's going on in Harrisburg. And it needs to stop. Like, like Representative Hamm says, what we stress, Harrisburg has a spending problem. They need to stop spending, they need to start looking at their, their own budget and start cutting things. And stop the waste that's going on down there. And when you tell a constituent that you're taxing something, and you're gonna use it for something like the gambling money, and you're gonna use it for property tax relief, and it doesn't happen, you're doing nothing but spewing lies. So, and when you say you're gonna spend it on something, you better spend it on something. And with the governor now wanting to raise, um, the taxes as much as 40-some percent, the personnel taxes and the corporate tax, um, again, it's not, it's not the way to go. His priorities in his budget was to raise the minimum wage to $15, to have a severance tax, and to have marijuana legalized. They were his three priorities. And we're in the midst of a COVID crisis, we need vaccines that aren't happening, that was not talked about. And, uh, we have people that have businesses closed. And they're trying to maintain a livelihood. So we need to get our priorities right in Harrisburg. And this is gonna affect the counties, because we see it already. When you're taking monies out of funds that are designated for things for the county and raising fees, that is, is gonna trickle down to the counties and affect us dramatically.
Hey, I'm gonna add something to that. Commissioner Maribito, how many years has it been since you were the state rep?
Oh, I think, uh, let me see, 14, 15, and 19. Oh, eight, this is, uh, like, the seventh year since I've gone...
So this was the seventh year. And, and I remember when you were the state, state rep, I asked you to send me the budget, the state budget. And it was, now this is how many years ago? Seven? It was $27 billion. This governor proposed a $41-point-some-billion-dollar budget. In seven years, we're almost doubling. What is going on? What? Are we throwing up our arms and just printing out fiat money and borrowing? Uh, this has a direct effect on counties, you know? Everybody once, 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 don't cut mine, but let me tell you, it, you have to pay it back. And we're not doing a very good job of that. County here, we are, we're very responsible. But the state and the federal government, forget it.
I'll give you another example. COVID monies, which could be helping businesses, helping people. The Department of Health is taking $100 million to do a communication plan. $100 million to do a communication plan. Just give the, just give the plan to the National Guard and let them come in and work with the EMAs across the counties to get the vaccines out. We have the centers, we have the personnel, we have the hospitals, we have the schools to do a vaccine program. We don't need $100 million spent on a communication plan.
Paid for by the taxpayers of Pennsylvania. Nuts. We lost our...
Well, I don't know what the, the communication plan is, but I imagine it may be trying to help people understand where they go to get vaccines. Because one of the issues that's been arising over and over is that people are not sure where to go, but, but we'll have to see, have to see.
Uh, Commissioner, I just...
Do you, I, do you have, I, I don't want to interrupt your comments here, but...
I was just gonna say, we, we could do much better and spend $100 million to communicate things to people.
Yeah, hopefully.
Do you have any comments?
Well, two, just two quick things. One, I, maybe the director can give us an update on the MOU for the Center for Independent Living. I was asked about that, I think there was some confusion, they thought it was gonna be on the agenda for today. And that's another comment I have.
Commissioner, um, I received the updated draft MOU from the solicitors Friday. Sent it out for final staffing with, uh, the departments that have to action it. And followed up today, uh, I hope to get the final comments, if any, back today, and then we can get that thing out.
Yeah, we had checked with the solicitor last week, Thursday and Friday, we had talked to him about it, the director, myself, and it was being finalized as the director stated.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, I just hope the public will really be vigilant about this, about, about the COVID. It's, you know, we still see people without masks now, there's 30 states, including Pennsylvania, that have the, the variant of it. Uh, you know, what happened, and, and I don't think they mind using their names, because they, they told me that's okay to the Rogers family. Krista, who is our comptroller, and Harry, who worked at the prison, uh, they can't say definitively, but they are pretty certain that Harry contracted it at the prison. This is why it's very important for employees who can work from home, I think, to be working from home, because whenever we circulate and move around, we risk moving the virus from one location to another. But, but Harry came down with it, he's very sick, he's got pneumonia. Krista has it, um, their 11-year-old daughter. Olivia has it, their four-year-old grandson has it. Um, and, you know, of course, Olivia's came to us and spoke to us at a Commissioners meeting probably about a couple of months ago, or I can't remember exactly, she's, she's had a battle with, uh, with child cancer exposure. And, and, uh, it's just very important for the public to recognize that when we go, especially without masks, we, we not only put yourself at risk, which obviously you put others at risk, and I just hope that the public will continue to be vigilant and realize that we still have a small number of people that are vaccinated. And, uh, we should try to do all we can as a county to make sure that employees who can work from home, work from home. Uh, I know that, that's been a policy, but I think we need to make sure that it's being enacted throughout the county. Uh, all of the major organizations, I mean, all the major tech companies and, uh, even locally law, uh, law firms and, uh, insurance companies that are, are working or restricting access to facilities. So I hope people will take this in the spirit and intended that we, we don't want to keep seeing our obituary pages growing longer and longer. And if we can just hang in there, we're still gonna be able to get through this if we all just do the things that hopefully we can do. And our prayers go out to the Rogers family, as well as all the other families that are struggling with this now.
And Commissioner, I, uh, we sent our prayers out to the Rogers too and everybody else. The county has, has chosen to be proactive and not reactive through this crisis. Initially, we had Third Street Plaza, uh, was utilized for the pathology and registering recorder back in April. Uh, we saw what was going on in the real estate market and the cry of, of people needing to do closings. Uh, we did not, we didn't throw our hands up, we developed a plan, and it was safe. And with the cooperation of, of many departments within the county, we were able to do that for the public. We then drafted, uh, a opening plan for our buildings in May of 2020. While their entities stayed closed, we drafted a plan that was, uh, looked at initially by me, uh, what our counties were doing on Tor, Snyder, what those counties were doing. And, uh, we then briefed it with our senior leadership team and our COVID planning coordination team. Everybody had input on it, uh, how many people would be in an elevator, uh, the distances, things like that. And we developed a plan to get our buildings reopened for the public. We had our PPE and plastic, plexiglass barriers put in common areas. Uh, if you walk into the buildings, you'll see those throughout the, the different buildings. We spent thousands of dollars doing that, we have our buildings sprayed down three times a day by our maintenance. Uh, we have, we went into an appointment-only schedule by departments to limit the traffic. We had departments seeing clients in the field. For instance, APO has gone from 4,000 people, from 1,000 people seeing a month to 4,000 people seeing a month in the field. We then went a step further, and we developed a letter we sent to the governor to have the county open, to go to the green phase. On May 26th, we were one of the last counties to be opened. And we spoke to the Department of Health, and Commissioner, you were on that call, and you, you saw how clueless the Department of Health was about the questions we were asking them. So I penned a letter that you signed your name to, Commissioner Missar, that we sent to the governor, within days, we were able to go green. And that was on May 26th, it was still open, we were open, uh, county back up in June, first week of June. Uh, we've developed a senior leadership team initiated that evolved into the COVID planning coordination team that's still meeting on a regular basis, that anything related to COVID goes through that, so we can keep our buildings open. Uh, you, you requested contact tracing, we've looked into that. I sent you an email from a company back on January 4th, asking your thoughts. I've received no response from you. So I'm still waiting your response on that contacting tracing company, and we, if we can start to implement that. But I need feedback from you. We've worked with the director and the public safety director on directives to keep things open cautiously and safely. This is a serious disease, it is deadly. But we cannot hide in our basements, we cannot stay in our homes and get things done effectively. Government needs to stay open. People have lives, they have to do things, they have to have them accomplished. There's closings on homes. We provide services throughout the county that people cannot wait on. When we can work from home, those employees are to go to the director and staff that first with their, with their supervisor to see if it's, they can work remotely. There's a lot of departments that can't work remotely. We have 24/7 operations that cannot work remotely from home, for instance, the prison. So what we need to do is look at each department individually, which we have. They're to be staffed by the supervisor, if they can work from home. It's then staff with the director, staff with the COVID team. And there are some people that are working from home when permitted. So we'll continue to do so. Our goal is to stay open, it's to do so safely. Uh, our, our goal is, we're, we're elected officials, we're leaders. We're not gonna throw our hands up, we're gonna say, how can we solve this? And why do we need to solve this? And we'll work together as a team to get things done. And we'll work together as a team to get things done, so that we can stay open safely and cautiously.
So let me just make a couple of comments. On the contact tracing, I don't believe in micromanaging in this county. We have a Department of Public Safety, which should be, quite frankly, running the response to the pandemic. It is their job to find all the, I shouldn't have even had to at a press conference, put forward that we should do testing and contact tracing. That should be coming from the Department of Public Safety to the county commissioners. And they should be saying, commissioners, here are the proposals. This company can do this, this company can do that. We've had none of that from the Department of Public Safety. So if we're going to get into an analysis of what we've done right and what we've done wrong, which I really don't want to do, but I just want to point that out. You may have not gotten a response email, because it's not our job to try to micromanage and run every little thing in this county. It's our job to set policy. It's our job to make sure that we spend money. Number one. Number two, Olivia's 15. She's not 11, now that I just think about it. So the young, the young daughter of Krista Rogers, I misspoke there. She's 15, how the years go by. But in terms of the working from, no one is saying, this is not a paradigm of we're shutting down the county, or we're keeping it open. That's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm saying is, listen, the county's open, right? Places are open. But we still need to try to get people, we should not have had anybody working in the prison who was not an essential, meaning a prison guard. They shouldn't be in the prison. I, when we, a couple of weeks ago, we were having a meeting at the prison, and I said, you know, why are we meeting at the prison? And the warden said to me, Rick, by statute, we have to have so many prisons, so many meetings every year. So I understood that. I mean, he didn't have a choice, because the statute was never during, and I don't know, it's a good question, during the emergency, can that statute be, can we get from the Department of Corrections a permission to not hold further meetings inside the prison, since we now know we have like 76 positive cases among prisoners there? I mean, we shouldn't have, my point is that we shouldn't have people going in to these places, because they're going to take whatever they touch, or whoever they come in contact with, and they're going to spread it in the community. That was my point about the example of the Rogers family, that it went from our county employees to, well, Krista's obviously a county, works at the county, too, but then it went to the children. So my point was not to say that somehow we are not doing certain things. My point is to say that we have an obligation to try and to make sure that we don't contribute to the spread by having people in places where they don't necessarily need to be. I work remotely. In case anyone's noticed, I've been attending these meetings by phone, because it doesn't make sense when we can attend. And by the way, we, I think, are probably the only county in the state where commissioners are not holding Zoom meetings remotely. I could be wrong on that. But I know in Clinton County and in other counties, they're holding these meetings remotely. And I think that that's what we should be doing. Only because we statistically increased the chance of spreading the virus. That's my point. But it's all about, all about, you know, the spread of it. So I don't take the remark to mean that somehow, I did say we gave a C, I think, and quite frankly, I'm inclined to downgrade it maybe to a D.
Yes, Commissioner, I've heard that, I've heard that. So this is the reason why I prepared this.
I sent that in an email.
Yes, you did.
To numerous leaders, because I think that some of the things that have happened didn't have to happen. You know, people shouldn't have been working in the prisons who weren't, who didn't need to, who weren't prison guards. You know, why would you, why would you have everyone for the last, all the prisoners for the last X number of months in quarantine, or not in quarantine, but, you know, in keeping them in their cells and so forth, but not have, not have employees who don't need to be there? You know, that's my point. That we need to be more proactive. And these details as to whether it's, whether it's contact tracing or testing, et cetera, they should be coming to us. You know, they should be coming to us. We shouldn't be having to go out. And the commissioner, I shouldn't be calling companies up, saying, hey, what are you going to charge us for contact tracing? I mean, it's just, first of all, we have bigger, you know, we have, we have other things we need to do, but number one. But number two, that's the work that the staff should be performing. So anyway, maybe we got more involved in this than intended, but I do hope that people will recognize that they need to keep themselves and their families safe.
And Commissioner, I appreciate your comments, and that's the reason why I made my comments, is because I've understood that you've downgraded your grading of us, which I feel is unfortunate that you would not bring that to our two commissioners and discuss with us first before you would go public with it and send it out in emails.
But you were on that email.
No, I was not on that email. I was told about that email.
No, the email, the email went to.
Went to the warden.
No, that was a separate email that went to the warden. I sent an email to members of the prison board, was it members of the prison board?
No, not the one I received. I received the one where you were downgrading our performance. My question is, is.
Oh, yeah, no, well, listen, first of all, I'm not a rating agency.
Well, you seem to be doing that.
Well, no, but if I, in other words, you sit there and you say that before I go public, I mean, listen, I've been very upfront about my feelings about what we've been doing since day one, when I, whether it was wearing masks or doing all sorts of things. I've had the same consistent theme, which is follow the science, okay? And unfortunately, the whole thing got politicized. And we won't go down that road as to how it got politicized, but it got politicized. So that the whole response to the pandemic became, became a, something else than it should have been. But, you know.
Well, all I'm going to say, Commissioner, is stirring the pot is not problem solving. Saying there are issues and not coming up with problems, solutions to the problem and not making decisions to get things done is counterproductive. So as elected official, as an elected official, my job is to work with the departments. And if I have to reach out to DPS to ask a question, I'm going to do so. You can choose to do it how you want to, but this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to continue to look out to our department heads, our elected officials. I'm going to be at work every day with a mask on to get my job done.
Scott, I'm doing the same thing, okay? I expect people who I pay $90,000 a year to, to exercise initiatives, okay? I don't think that I should be telling the Department of Public Safety to go and find out where testing's being done in this county. And that I should be telling them to find out where contact tracing's being done, when we have multiple people that we're paying. So I take offense at the implication that somehow I am not doing my job, because I choose to do it remotely.
And that's your choice. And my choice is, I will be here.
And quite frankly, we've had a number of people in our office with COVID, and we have had more people in the county get sick with COVID than we should have. A constituent called me last night and told me that we are number six now, in terms of per capita with the number of deaths from COVID. We were 19, a couple of months ago, I got the article on my table here, 19 in this country. So you want to give an A to this county for a response to COVID? I mean, that's insane. How do we wind up number 19 on a list? How do we wind up with people being required and told not to work remotely, when the commissioners have told people to work remotely, who are not, who can do it?
Commissioner, what I'm saying is, as a county elected official, we have done the best we can do, and we've done, I believe, a good job to keep our facilities open safely and cautiously. Now, we have had people get COVID, absolutely. I don't want anyone to get COVID, anyone. But our county employees are working, are safe, and we have been spared the brunt of this. We have been. And even as a county, if you look back to the stats, if you look back to the stats, our county did not really increase till November 1st. And it started to drop back off the second week of January. We're going back in the right direction now. So during that 10-week time period, I keep all, I keep everyday stats. I've kept them from the beginning. During that time week period, from November 1st through about January 15th, is when COVID hit this area terribly. Besides that, we've been spared the brunt of this. When you look at other counties and other states.
So Scott, I'm reading December 21st, Mr. Chairman. Williamsport ranked 19th highest in infection rate. 19th highest, had a daily average of 143 cases, with 126 cases per 100,000 people.
Commissioner, what did I just say, from November 1st through January 15th? Your article's December. I agree with you on that. All I'm saying is, instead of grading us, work with us to make things better. That's all I'm going to say, and that's my final statement.
My press isn't working. I'm the one who's been saying, let's use money for testing. I'm the one who's been saying, let's wear masks. And then I go to meetings, and people are not wearing masks. I'm not going to sit and beat my head against the wall when I go into meetings. Listen, we had a meeting just the other day, you guys had some people in from a nonprofit that wanted to talk to us. And I heard, I heard someone saying something like, well, you know, you can wear the mask or you don't have to wear the mask. I'm not going to go into naming names which organization it was. So if one of them is asymptomatic and leaves COVID on death, shares, et cetera, they're putting at risk other employees who come into that commissioner's office. And it's just not necessary. That's my point. That's why I downgraded it to a D, because I see continuously practices that violate the very recommendations from the CDC. And they're coming from the highest levels of the county. This isn't coming from some employee who may not know better. It's coming from the very people who enact the policies. I had constituents call me up and say, how come I go into a meeting and I see people not wearing masks? How come I go to the county commissioner's office? It was just last week we installed the plexiglass. And I'm not faulting anybody for that, because you can't sit there, you know, it was an oversight, and a constituent pointed it out, and we did it, okay? And that's very good. I'm not blaming us for not having that there. I'm just saying that we shouldn't sit back and rest on our laurels and say that we've done such a great job, and we're doing all this. It's counterproductive.
That's correct. And we're not sitting back on our laurels. We're continually acting, and we meet on a regular basis to address it. And the CDC also says you have to have 15 minutes of continuous contact to contract the disease. Let's remember that. Public comment this time? Here are you none? We have anything on the line? Yes, go ahead.
Misty Dionne, Roads to Freedom, SIL, has submitted an MOU to the county to apply for EMA reimbursement for expenses incurred while responding to the COVID-19 disaster for people in congregate settings. And she says.
That was the one we answered, we responded.
Yeah, we answered that. Yes, we've been working on it through the solicitor.
I don't want to not leave.
No, yeah, we've been, we, Misty had called, or she had emailed me at the end of last week, and I got with the director, and we stated where it's at. The director said it was being finalized.
Commissioner Maribito pretty much verbatim said.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was it for public.
Any other public comment this time?
No. Not here.
That's right. Here are you none, our meeting's adjourned. We have no meeting on Thursday. We've completed our agenda. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February 16th, at 10:00 a.m. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Judge. How are you doing, Sheriff?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
Not too bad. How you doing, man?
Good, what's going on?
Good.